Yeah.
They're supposed to also...
Well.
I'm not supposed to be there, so I can't go there.
But if you're not, you can do that in the chair.
Yeah, you can in the car.
But I'm tired of talking to you.
Right.
Days and nights. I don't mind. I know that it's...
And those...
I just got some...
I think they're...
I called them up. They're there in the chair.
Really, just need to...
Because it was part we didn't have to do that, and we had it.
Well, it's...
Yeah.
No, they changed the setting.
They mentioned that the same... That they're with the...
Oh, it's there. See that room? These are their... See, they've got one... And if you don't want it, you can... Yeah, keep that one right there.
Or your...
I think that's...
Oh, no, we don't have that. Oh, you can... I think it's one of us from...
I think that's... Those are us that.
Was that to sweep this cemetery?
Yes.
Is this sweet? I've heard this next to me. The charger?
It is not.
Oh, right here. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, I did. Just...
I just... The usual, like, if I should...
The church was always... This is society assembly. You just hit some levels. And then I can...
All on you.
Alright, why don't you say it again?
Good, how you doing?
The senator?
I think I already got your... I didn't...
You're on the area of...
Yes.
You go to a big...
No, it's just... It must have been in...
I just...
I just...
Well, I don't... And then people...
Watch out there.
I watched, you know, I was gonna...
I was thinking about like, what are the justice...
I could watch, and I was gonna register for Saturday, and I was like, yeah.
All the stuff with... Which I would earn. Kind of trouble myself.
I watched, but all was...
We're gonna take one someday. Everything we should do is there. And everything... Yeah, and then the first time, alright.
And then when you went to straight... And then we go for the territory. But my family... They need to... We need to make... But they can't...
Just for...
Let's see, how much longer?
Are we going to turn those?
We're going back to that, John. What do you mean?
Yes, sir.
I love them. That's actually...
Would be...
Thirty-nine.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. They're...
He tries to...
I always would advise that... If you're...
What is this?
If we have a... She... We're not...
Yes. Yeah.
From this morning.
Ah? I want to give you so much time. That's how long I can...
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good morning, newcomers. Those either are just joining us in the room or online. We've had a very efficient morning, including some... Some going back into nineteen... into the nineteen hundreds, so that was pretty cool. Got to experience it all back to the future. Now, we are going to go back on the agenda to item number nine, which is a ten o'clock public hearing, and this is a continuation of an appeal filed by Christina Kennison regarding approval of the conditional use permit UH dash twenty-five dash oh-three. This item is up for possible action again as was, since this is a carryover of our public hearing from our last meeting. I'll just read this here, and then I'll make a few comments as it relates to how we're gonna move forward under my chairmanship today. Consideration discussion of possible action on appeal filed by Christina Kennison with the clerk of the board of county commissioners concerning the regional planning commission's approval of UH dash twenty-five dash oh-three, a conditional use permit submitted by Ron Sessin on behalf... Did I get that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Ron. On behalf of Crossroads Paper LLC, the subject property is located off of West Rose Creek Road at the I-80 interchange. The assessed parcel number is zero-five dash zero-eight-zero-three dash zero-four, zero-five dash zero-four-eight-four dash zero-two, and zero-five... Excuse me, zero-five dash zero-four-eight-four dash zero-three, and zero-five dash zero-four-eight-four dash zero-four. This item again is a continuation of our September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five hearing, and again, we will have discussion of possible action. So, before I open this up for our continuation, I will ask, give you an opportunity for public comment, even though it's not required, since the public comment could have been, should have been considered as part of our previous meeting. I will ask, though, if you want to offer public comment, that you keep it to three minutes or less, and if you would so kind as not to repeat what you already said in the September twenty-second meeting, because that's already part of the record. So, any fresh information, though, is welcome as part of the public comment. I will note that Deborah Gay could not be here at the ten o'clock meeting, but she was here this morning as part of our regular meeting and offered public comment specifically as it relates to this public hearing, so that information is here. I don't think I need to read that into the record, since it was read into the record. It is available if you need it as a handout, but it's, again, from Deborah Gay this morning. She did read it into the record, again, as part of the public comment for this public hearing, and with her authority, she cannot be here for this. So, again, is everyone in the room or online clear as to how we're gonna do this in terms of opening it up for public comment again? So, with that, is there any public comment as it relates to the public hearing? In the room? Is there any online? No?
I see nothing.
Okay. Yes, Christina, please. And for those mainly online, please use the mic and read your name into the record. Thank you.
Christina, can I step to the record? There were some things that happened at the last meeting that I was not able to comment on. I wasn't allowed to speak for them.
If you want to include those as part of your three minutes here, have at it.
During... towards the end of the meeting, Commissioner Jesse Hill spoke that my argument for what his inference was from it, that this is industrial and not commercial, and that if it was commercial, it would, I think he thought it would... But what I said earlier at the beginning of the meeting with my presentation talked about how even if it were to be considered commercial, it still would fall under the proper zoning district law. And then towards the end of the meeting, it was said that the planning commission had all relevant information for their home, and they did not. They were only told about the packet of scope of work by Crossroads at the end of the meeting, and that's when I heard about it, and Betty told the planning commissioners that she would send them the copy after the meeting at a later time, and that's how I was able to get the scope of work. But those were some glaring misconceptions that came up during the meeting. I also wanted to read in from emails I received from Betty as far as master plan designations. And it shows here that under commercial, there are three separate zoning districts in the Humboldt County code, and she shows commercial to be retail stores, motels, casinos, businesses, maybe theater, hardware store, beauty shop, car dealership, all businesses that are open to the public and serving the public. And under industrial, she shows that there are four industrial zoning districts in the county, and she puts down industrial in the master plan for the description, tank farms, battery plants, chemical producers, which are all manufacturing type, more industrial type. So even in the county records, there is a clear differentiation between commercial and industrial. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kennison. Is there any... do you have anything you want to comment on that? Is there any other public comment in the room? Ron, anything you'd like to add?
No, thank you. Appreciate it.
Alright, well, I'll throw this to the commission on questions, and I'll just kick one off and just get the juices going. And this is a question for Ron, if it's okay, just for some clarity, if you don't mind. I'm having you come up here so the folks online can hear your answer. One of the items on here was employees, well, approximately a hundred-and-twenty employees by year three, and it starts in one oh eight, and it goes to one twenty, with approximately forty or fifty employees onsite at any time. Just curious, what type of sewer management or human wastewater stream management are you... what was your expectations there and how we're gonna handle that? Because obviously, you're aware that we're already faced with some wastewater nitrate mitigation efforts, significant efforts within the county, and we don't want to add to that issue, so I was curious, since you're knowledgeable about our issue there, how you plan to help us get over the hump there, at least how you're gonna handle yours.
Great, thank you. Commissioner, you'd ask, this is John Sessin for the record, and my brother Ron is also on the line here, and so happy to address that, but let me see if Cody is... has gone on to the meeting and have him address that specifically.
And Cody, if you're gonna chime in here and answer that question...
Go see Cody.
What are you gonna do with the shit, is my question, how does that have to be right up front?
Well, let me... we have submitted a response to that specifically here, and Don, have you been able to forward that on to the...
Yes.
The commission, okay. Let me see.
And if it was in the gaps of information that I printed out, please refresh my memory then.
I will give you the highlights as I try to click to it here. Thank you, great. And essentially, we will have about, you know, a total of a hundred to a hundred-and-twenty employees there onsite, not all at the same time, it's a twenty-four hour operation, so, you know, thirty to fifty.
Forty to fifty is what it says.
Sure, and so, we will have a separate septic system. We'll be drawing out, you know, the water for toilets and showers and kitchens and that, you know, hand washing, you know, those sorts of functions. But we will have, similar to the rest of the neighborhood out there, we'll have a septic system that is a RUBA DP that will be handling the solid liquid waste that's out there.
If I might, if I might jump in here, this is Ron Sessin, I'm attending remotely today, for the record.
Please.
Regarding domestic waste, based on the typical maximum daily population of employees, a site would utilize a tradition septic tank and leach field. Only water from toilet sinks and showers will flow to the septic system. Method of waste wastewater discharge is permitted through MDP, similar to other commercial facilities. It's essentially a septic system.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions by commissioners or comments or things to get going here? Commissioner Cherry, please.
I'd like Betty to come up, if you would. Morning, Betty. Thanks for coming up. I'd like a little more clarification, I guess. One of the... One of the main questions out here is why this is... How it was determined that this would be commercial versus industrial? What... how did that determination come about?
Betty wants the record. After meeting with Crossroads representative several times, and then providing us with the information of what was going on, it didn't fall under commercial or industrial, I'm sorry. It's... they're washing paper and making new paper. I think somebody pointed out, industrial is manufacturing, they're not manufacturing. I guess you could say the argument, but...
Yeah, I guess that's where maybe the... Less... the clarity that comes in is where isn't this manufacturing, the manufacturing cardboard?
No, they're manufacturing the paper to make the cardboard product. It's to...
This is papers, I just have a question. Can you tell me what are commercial businesses in Humboldt County?
What are commercial businesses?
Yes, I have any class ready.
I... there's many, I don't know.
Can I help clarify that question, maybe of a similar...
Yeah.
A similar...
We don't have any...
We don't have any.
Anything that's similar to this, so there's nothing to compare to. I will point out, as I link my memo to the commissioners, we... every mine that is in Humboldt County is on property that is zoned and through. Now, if you don't... if that's not industrial, then I don't know what is industrial.
Okay. That was a little bit of a question, I wanted to see what's the difference, but...
And granted, it's not close to town, Sainco is actually zoned and industrial, you know, the... Out in Humboldt County, Diamond Plastics, property zoned and through. And there's people that live pretty much just as close to that facility as to the proposed...
Yeah, I did some looking up to see where some of these other factories are, and they're all on housing areas. I mean, or I shouldn't say all, but a lot of them were definitely in the center of things, I did do that. I was just trying to make sure that there was something maybe incomparable now that you have, we don't have people. Okay, that was my question.
That's another... so, you know, if we were to turn... if we change our master plan and call that area industrial, we wouldn't even be here today, because that would be what we would be.
You would be here, because if you looked at what industrial allows, you wouldn't want that type of stuff out there. I mean, that's the other thing we looked at, is not changing the zoning to industrial, because then you're writing a lot worse than washing off cardboard.
Yeah, that's kind of where it's...
Yeah, I have a caution on the term worse, you know, worse in your opinion, so...
No, but I mean...
Let's not define, let's not get into using semantic words.
Well, I can give you a list of what would be allowed, outright allowed.
Right, I don't like the term worse, because it takes a lot of things in this world of the world, so... Commissioner... Please, you go down there, Commissioner.
Betty, I just have a couple of questions, just maybe clarification to make sure we're accurate on my research. So, about a year ago, we changed that from the end is a commercial, correct?
Correct, the master plan.
Yeah, the master plan. So, now it's in three open land. So, one of the uses, under conditional uses, under seventeen point four, four oh four oh, is milling, mining, and processing of materials, or minerals. Isn't allowable use under conditional use in this zoning? Okay, is that correct?
Yeah.
That's what allows them, I just do a little bit.
Perfect.
Okay, and I should ask, Commissioner Cherry, officially, did you have anything else you wanted to add to your questions?
No, I don't.
Okay. We'll just keep going left to right. Commissioner Tipton, you missed the last meeting, but I'm assuming you had an opportunity there.
I read through, we went on a last meeting, been following this for a while, and quite a while now, and I guess my question would be to Anthony, as to, in the planning commission, is there anything that they have done that does not meet MRF?
No, I reviewed it, and I don't want to be following it, not following it.
Okay, thank you. And I... in conjunction with that, or maybe in line with the planning commission, I asked, maybe I asked Betty, she probably got the length to ask Commissioner Cherry, in, say, the last ten or fifteen years, how many planning commission opinions or findings or decisions have we had an appeal on, and how many have been overturned? Just curious of how, maybe, I know that the members, constituents have changed, but one of the things I always worry about is asking good people to step up and serve on these various committees or commissions, and then when they do utilize due diligence and make a decision, and then the commission overrides that, you know, at some point, do we minimize the potential for good people to continue to serve there?
Yeah, I don't recall any. The last one that I know for sure was the Landfield, which was in two thousand and eight, when I first started working here.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Brooks, your turn, anything else? Okay. The one concern I have in the broad scope of all of this, it comes back to my first question, we're working, I know that's a minor piece of the puzzle here, but it does fall in line with, you know, basically forty to fifty people on a daily basis, I don't know. Again, we're trying to mitigate septic-related nitrate loading of the groundwater. I think the water management system that I, based on my experience, water management system and what the environmental protection and water, you know, you're not gonna be able to put anything in. If you put water into the ground that doesn't match, that is bad compared to the groundwater you're putting into, or doesn't meet profile two or drinking water standards, you're gonna have to shut it down, that's the risk you take, so you play by the rules or you shut yourself down. So, I'm confident there, because I've been on the general manager side of that accountability, so... But the piece of the puzzle I'm worried about is, again, now we're putting more septic in, and I just want you to eyes wide open as we progress towards some kind of wastewater management system as it relates specifically to human sewer. Okay, what's the board's pleasure here? Any other questions? We've got the players in the room, yep. Yes, come on up, and please use the mic, so everyone online can hear you. Thank you, and please reintroduce yourself.
This is John Sessin here again, for the record. I think we've got Cody and Owen from Shaw Engineering available to address that, Commissioner, if that's your pleasure.
Yeah, quickly, since you... I think you... and I apologize, I think I referred you as Ron, as opposed to your brother Ron and your John, so without repeating what Ron already answered on that question, Cody, have a...
Yeah, hi, everyone, Cody Black, Shaw Engineering, for the record. Yeah, I think, you know, looking at the process, the process stream, given the commercial process reject water back into the ground, you know, keeping the domestic sewage, I think was kind of our initial thought on that, but we'll work with MDP and whatever their guidance is on how to best handle and mitigate nitrates, and how they want to see this treatment plan go through, there are a handful of options. I mean, you know, we can... they may want to have kind of separate treatment streams just for monitoring and just process, you know, applications and things like that, so if they end up wanting us to do more of a, maybe a limited, like, nitrate only, where we have maybe a primary treatment with Oesteas, you know, non-septic, but then maybe adding in some nitrate treatment to that, that's something that we will definitely work with them on, because I know that they are sensitive as well to, obviously, the nitrate levels going back in. The nice thing about the domestic sewage is that, you know, that is something that can be disposed of through a traditional, you know, traditional subsurface leach field, whereas, you know, if we did that with any of the process waste, they would actually consider that an underground injection control, which is something that we want to stay away from, because we want those infiltrating soils to be at the surface, so they can be monitored and maintained. If at the end of the day, the preference from MDP is that we actually just go mingle the domestic sewage with the stuff going to the ribs, and just introduce it back into that wastewater, we will definitely go that route, so...
Yeah, I'll help you out with that, the answer on that one is no. I think, back to the concern around your wastewater treatment and meeting the background requirements through infiltration, which is basically gravity, not injection, versus underground septic leach field, so I think from a conditional use and what the county would like to see would be definitely two different streams, so they can be monitored.
Well, yeah, and when I say... Yeah, and when I say commingled, I don't mean we would introduce it right into the same headworks, but it might be something where you get some, you know, preliminary, you know, pre-treatment on each stream, and then they come back together for maybe some polishing and do the plant a clarify, or if they go out to the ribs. I mean, domestic sewage, like, if the city's plant goes to the ribs right now, right? So, sending the domestic sewage to ribs wouldn't be anything crazy or, you know, unseen, it's very typical, so...
Okay. Cody?
We're gonna look at their guidance.
And again, Cody, I get all that, I'm just saying, from a public concern around waters, making sure that we can... that your permits are tied to the different streams, you know, what's being done in the plant in terms of water management, making sure that there's a compliance point that you're reporting on that, versus the septic thing. So, I get the commingled piece, but I want to make sure that there's two different watering points as a function of two different, or whatever the required permit is for water management within the recycling facility itself, does that make sense?
Yes, and that's, that's a good classification, yeah.
Okay. Because I have to get there, that's not the only issue on the table here, has been clearly communicated by Ms. Kennison and Ms. Gay and others that obviously have concerns on multiple fronts, but the water piece of the puzzle is huge, because it's... we've been fortunate to have some water recharge due to reasonable winters here the last few winters, but it did go through a significant series of droughts, and again, we are working on a significant cost of accounting to mitigate nitrate loading as it relates to human waste, so I just wanted to make sure that that was out there, and if you were aware of our efforts there. Okay, yes, Commissioner Cherry, please.
Mr. Cherry, I've not been clear, as far as water usage out there, will some of this be recycled and reused, and won't that all cut your water usage? will some of this be recycled and reused and won't that all cut your water usage just now and recycle it?
It will, there's a complex system within the plant, the facility itself that reuses water, you know, several times before it reaches a threshold where it needs to be, you know, sort of moved out of the system and then into the process water, waste processing system.
One question too, and this is for Ron, Cody, or John, I need to make sure at least the first name is correct. As it relates to, I read in the application utilizing the regional landfill for waste, and I think one of our public participants at the last meeting expressing concerns about volumetrics and water management as it relates to stuff going into the regional landfill. Can you expand on that? And have you had interaction with our regional landfill operator in that regard?
We've spoken with the county manager, Don, about, you know, the future of us participating and assisting in the development of more landfill space as needed. I mean, we're certainly going to be, you know, an anchor customer of the counties and we, you know, want to be able to, you know, participate in making sure that resource is available for the whole community, including our needs as well. So it's not a, you know, it's not a small and insignificant amount. I mean, it can be, you know, ten to fifteen percent or so of the daily, you know, input of what comes into the plant. So, you know, so we will need to have a long-term partnership with county throughout having landfill space for our needs as well as yours. It goes into the, you know, several decades down the road, so we're happy to be part of that.
What about the water piece of that, that shows up as a piece of a waste, trying to keep water out of a waste, a regional landfill, I call it the dump.
Sure.
My dad was here, he'd say, get him more. I think, you know, keeping water out of the dump that isn't natural meteoric event water is important, so can you comment on that?
Sure. Ron, do you want to comment on that one first?
Yeah, let me, if I can. Thanks for the question, this is Ron Sessine again for the record. Part of the response to Commissioner Cherry's question about water, recirculation is linked to our use of the landfill. Removing excess water from any landfill-bound materials is a critical portion of this process. And so we will use a system of screw drives that pressurize that material to extract all of the possible water-containing material from it. That water then gets recirculated, cleaned internally, goes back into what are known as the shower systems or the stock preparation. We're going to capture that water, utilize it as part of this internal water cycle. The remaining moist material, it's not wet, but it does have some moisture to it, would then be bound for the landfill. And that material would have had, again, a significant amount of its water extracted so that what was going was, you know, no more wet than what might occur in a, you know, in a standard kind of rainfall dropping onto the, to the landfill. To echo John's comments, as a significant contributor to the landfill over time, we would exist as an anchor client, anchor customer of that landfill and be, you know, involved in making sure that it was effective and meeting our needs and the county's needs.
Good, thank you, Ron, for that. Don, just tell me, I sit on the dump committee, the regional landfill committee. We charge, if non-public but business users, we charge by the ton, is that correct?
Correct, it's either the ton or the yard.
Yeah, and I guess what I'm getting is if there's, you know, part of our line or management efforts need to be appropriately funded, if you will, so if it's by the ton, then it behooves you to manage how much of that ton is in water versus actual volumetric waste, so...
Indeed, indeed.
Yeah, because that's, you know, those are big concerns if you, and this is commentary by Commissioner Lewis, but if you look at some of the, one of the beauties here is we have a regional landfill that's well managed and that the public has access to, for the most part, free dump. And that sure has kept the surrounding areas of our Humble County nice and clean. If you look at some places that have had certain users to the point where they've had to start charging, the places like around Sparks area, you don't have to go too far in the outskirts of town and find where people have said, I can't afford the dump and I'm going to dump my shit here or they don't want to get in there, so we're going to hold you accountable for parting up on that of our issues there. And then again, I've already made enough of commentary about the water. So, yes, Commissioner Tipton, please.
Is that, I don't know if I missed it, I ran out of the last meeting. When you bring your cardboard in, will it all be baled?
Yes, no, everything is going to be baled that comes, you know, from throughout the region. However, to add upon that, anything that comes from the community, there'll be a combination of bales and there'll be some loose material that'll be at drop-off locations for the citizens. And so that'll come in in a thirty or forty-yard roll-off bin and that'll be dropped right there at the infeed conveyor of the system. So it'll go up, it'll ride along with the bale. So that, the only loose material will be coming from right here within the community.
Well, that stands to my question, I want to know what the possibility of loose cardboard falling out would be?
I think it's quite minimal because the infeed conveyor itself is going to be surrounded by, you know, four walls and ceiling. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Christina, go ahead.
Yeah, come on, please. Well, I'm just getting ready to find you.
Yeah, please. And just for clarity here, we're trying to ask substantive questions and I'm not the judge of what is substantive, what isn't. This is a public comment part here, we're trying to get down to the nitty-gritty so we can move forward, so go with it.
Well, going back to Susie Morris again, back to your question about appeals, the, I did sit here thinking about it, the gem out in Paradise Valley, someone out there appealed, but it's set by the planning commission.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
But we did not overturn.
You did not overturn it, no.
And it's a beautiful facility out there. Anyway, one for the crowd, if you don't remember that. Christina, please.
Christina Kinison, for the record. I did want to mention with the M3 zoning and the mining falling under it, the geothermal plants in the state of Nevada are all under similar zoning. Mining is on a different level than industrial because mining generally goes in very specific places because they're actually extracting from the environment. The diamond plastics, I don't know if you guys recall, it's been a while, but I did mention that before Crossroads was even mentioned here. So a couple of years ago, when we were discussing having industrial happen to the airport, I brought up the diamond plastics was under M3 zoning, which was not the appropriate zoning for it. Actually, diamond plastics and all similar things across the country are under industrial zoning. They don't fall under the mining. That was before that is, that was in the nineties when that happened. I mentioned before though, you know, to repeat mistakes, it's still repeating the mistake, it's not making a right. The other thing is that the comparable mills, Commissioner Brooks mentioned that, you looked at the other mills along the country that you have recycled containerboard mills and noticed that they were away from people. I'll let you go, but I took it a step further and I actually researched the zoning for those mills. And every single... Sorry, thank you. Every single recycled containerboard mill across the United States is in the heaviest industrial zoning for that location, that city or county. And actually, most of them do not even have rapid infiltration basins. And if they do, it's only one or two. A lot of them are hooked up to local water and septic. And the other thing is, Chairman Evez, you mentioned the rapid infiltration basins and Cody actually brought up about the potential for having to use the basins for their septic. And just so you are aware, when you allow those rapid infiltration basins to go, then you no longer have say in what they're used for. The NDEP is the one who says whether or not it's appropriate for them to use it.
That's not true, Christina. There's a requirement in the permit application for rapid infiltration basins. And I'm not going to argue with you here, but I'm going to, I'll put my forty years of experience and accountability in that regard, so please continue.
Okay, so the rapid infiltration basins are wastewater treatment and any wastewater treatment is used to that, which is the same as a septic system. It is why under the Humble County zoning for having rapid infiltration basins, it falls under the wastewater treatment heavy industrial Humble County code. And this is to protect things like this from coming in close. And with all due respect, I've done a lot of research also, Mr. Evez.
I appreciate that, thank you.
I also forgot to mention when I was talking about Betty's, the county's land designations, when she did send me the definitions, the M3 zoning, which is what one of these parcels is, is actually under medium-density residential, high-density residential, and the open space multiple use. M3 is not mentioned under commercial or industrial. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kinison, appreciate it. Okay, last chance for, anybody would like to offer some constructive or data point input for our consideration, if not, we're going to see if we can give you a decision on this. Thank you, Betty. Okay, looks like anybody online? There was some conversation taking place in the middle of the room, is that just somebody off mute?
I believe so.
Okay, nobody online with any input? Okay, what's the board's pleasure here, I'll entertain them, there's one to be added as it relates to the public hearing. And I want to thank everyone for their input, including just Kada Campita, but again, that was Reg, she read to the commissioners as part of the public hearing and took part in the third, so...
That's Commissioner Hill. So with all due respect to the claimant on the appeal, I personally feel that we have not seen enough evidence to warrant an overturn of the planning commission's decision. You know, the planning commission made that decision and was brought before us as an appeal. You know, so with that, I'm prepared to make the motion.
Please do, Commissioner Hill.
My motion would be to deny the appeal filed by Christina Kinison with clerk of the board of Humble County Commissioners, considering the regional planning commission's approval of UH 25-03, a conditional use permit submitted by Ron Sessine on behalf of Crossroads Paper LLC. Subject property is located off of West Woods Creek Road and Hyatt Interchange. Accessory parcel number 050803-4050484-2, 050484-3, 050484-4...
So there is a motion on the floor by Commissioner Hill, and I'll just ask if there's any questions on that motion from the commissioners?
I would like to add, I want to add to my motion.
Please.
My basis for that decision was I feel that under seventeen dot four four oh four oh, this falls under one of the conditional uses allowed.
Okay, thank you for adding that clarity. The motion is to deny the appeal, any questions? I'll go by, Commissioner Brooks, any questions on that? Commissioner Tipton, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Cherry, any questions? No questions. Okay, there is a motion on the floor, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
As unanimously.
Thank you.
For that, Commissioner Hill. And just again, in closing this one out, to Ron and John and the folks at Crossroads, you know, the partnership's only as good as a true partnership. We're going to hold you accountable with the good stewards of your business there, you know, profit and loss, so that'll be the ultimate measurement whether you're successful or not. But we will have our eye and ears on you and we want you to be successful, but also want you to be good partners in the neighborhood, so to speak, so thank you for that.
And thank you, we expect no less, we appreciate that.
Okay, with that, I want to take a five-minute break and then Andrew come on up. Let the folks adapt things if you can, for the room. And then we're going to move to item number sixteen. Come on up, geared up, five-minute break, stretch your legs.
Well, I, you're there, I didn't see you. I mean, I... Your next question, you want to do that?
Oh, it's just recording, yeah, yeah.